I'd like to draw this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Steve and Deborah Thomas.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas, for leading us in the pledge this evening. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hare.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Councilman Londo.
Present.
President Gabbott.
Present.
My quorum is present.
We'll begin with announcements and presentations. Brian?
That's a whole bunch of young ones there. Champions there.
Don't you tell Brian that Councilman heard that Anderson wanted to present as well?
He was there when we were talking about it, not specifically.
Okay.
Council President, thank you very much, Westland City Council, thank you. It is my pleasure to welcome the 2017 Westland Meteors Varsity Team. Lot of accomplishments this year. How about going undefeated for the last four seasons? They were the Super Bowl champs this year. They actually rented a U-Haul to bring all their trophies, as you can see. And then the biggest accomplishment they had this year, the 2017 National Championship The national championships this year were in Gatlingburg, Tennessee. They were 3-0 in the national tournament with a combined score of 80 to 0. They actually made it to the national championship the last three years, but this year they finally took home the hardware. Congratulations, guys. We're gonna bring up the unit director, Taron Williams, to say a few words.
Thank you. Few words, I keep it real short. Just wanted to thank Brian for welcoming us out. We appreciate the recognition of the city. It's been a lot of hard work over the years, and it's really a beautiful thing to be honored, and for these guys to be recognized. We appreciate it. On behalf of the WYA and the Westland Meteors, again, thank you. We came bearing gifts, and we know Mayor couldn't make it today, but we wanted to present it to Brian, and it's just a jersey from Mayor Wild. Oh, Mayor, come on down. I'm sorry.
I'll take it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I saw the 19 on a Facebook post, so I was hoping that'd work for you. We also have some national championship rings that will be given to the mayor, along with Brian, to recognize the championship that the guys obtained.
We have some more hardware to add to your collection as well. So, on the behalf of the Westland City Council, which is behind you, they recognize the Westland Meteors football team as the 2017 Battle in Rocky Top National Football Champions. We also have a certificate of recognition from Westland City Hall, Mayor William R. Wild, to add to your collection as well. So, a lot of people don't know that years ago, this program was in shambles and almost folded. It took new regime to come in, and one of the things that impresses me the most about this organization is how much participation they have from your parents, from the coaches. They don't run it just as a football team, they truly run it as a family. They don't just teach football, they teach morals, reach for your goals, reach for the stars, and winning just comes along with it. But you guys truly do an amazing job, and thank you for what you do. Once again, 2017 National Champions. We're gonna get a couple picks.
We have someone here, I think, in place of, to represent Representative Kozowski, too. I think she has something, some goodies, too. But I'm gonna just give you the box of these for someone to pass out, rather than taking a lot of time, but it's from the Wayne County Commission, and Chase Belter, is he right here in the front somewhere? Okay, well, I'll give it to your coach here, okay, your representative. But anyway, we wanted to recognize you also, because it's an amazing feat that you've done, and we're very proud of you and what you've done. And, you know, I know the meteors have been a strong part of a sports program in the city for a long, long time, and as the director said, sort of fell by the wayside for a number of years. Thank you for rectifying that and bringing them back and bringing these young men up the way you have as far as making them part of the sports program. Thank you and congratulations.
I'd like to thank you guys on behalf of State Representative Robert Kozowski. He has certificates for you as well. Would you like to either read the names out, or how would you guys like that to be done?
We're gonna give them to him in the lobby.
Okay, so, thank you very much. We definitely appreciate all you guys do for the city, and great job, guys.
And actually, better than introducing them, we're gonna let them introduce themselves. Coach Morris, special teams.
Coach Parker, defensive coordinator.
Coach Chambers, defensive backs.
Coach Tremaine, or Coach May, head coach.
Coach Bolden, O-line and D-line.
Taron Williams, unit director.
Aaron Hill, left guard.
Joshua Fryerson, right tackle.
Davion Pittford, running back, linebacker.
Michael Shreid, running back.
Murray Hiscock, wide receiver.
Caleb Strong, running back.
DeShawn Saxon, defensive tackle.
Christian Chambers, cornerback.
Naveah Bean, defensive line.
Chase Belter, right guard.
Jamal Prince, cornerback.
Devonte Downey, offensive lineman.
Todd Williams, quarterback.
Jordan Garcia, cornerback.
So, I apologize, we're gonna do the pick now, if we can get everybody to stand, so you're in it. Once again, everybody, 2017 National Champions.
Heather?
Council President, Westland City Council, Mayor Wild. My name is Heather Hadfield-Cleare. I am the current president of the Westland Goodfellows. I just wanted to take a couple minutes of the chambers' time tonight to express the results of our 2017 No Child Without a Christmas Program. The Goodfellows served 620 children this year in our Christmas distribution, which is about the same number as 2016. We were up about 5.5 percent, so that's good. I'm thinking that maybe we're kind of leveling off in the number of kids that we're helping. We did have a record number of adoptions by local community groups, businesses, and residents this year, with 119 children adopted, in addition to the 16 kids that were hosted by the UAW Local 900 for their Angel Program. I wanted to highlight a few of the businesses that stepped up and adopted multiple families from our program, considering how much effort it takes to shop for children, wrap, deliver, you know, raise funds, companies such as Yuzaki, Net Shape Solutions in Canton, Parkside Credit Union in Lebonia, the Wayne Westland School Board Administration Office, SS Parking Solutions out of the airport, the Westland Police Department, Sentus, the Uniform Company, Wayne Memorial High School Senate Group adopted two families. So, overall, we had 32 different adopters that took 54 families. Even at our base spending, which is normally about $100 per child, that equated to the savings of over $13,000 of Goodfellow resources. And I know that our adopters spend way more than are required to spend on each of our children, so I'm very grateful for those adopters in our program, and I look forward to the continued expansion of that part of our program. I did want to highlight, we have retail partners here in the city and in other communities. We have partnerships with Westland Meyer, Westland Target. They are our hosts for our shopping program, where we send our families to those stores with Goodfellow money that we've raised to support their children and allow them to shop for their child as an individual. Most of our families are choosing to buy clothing, which we know is a huge resource, especially in the winter when they're needing coats and boots. We also have a great partnership with Heartland Marketplace, an independent grocery store on Ford Road. Phil and Paul Casa that own that grocery store chain are very generous with the Goodfellows in giving us a significant discount in our buying power there, and we're grateful that they'll enforce certain restrictions in our gift certificate program with them. We also had participation from Texas Roadhouse, where they did a dine and donate night for us, and raised over $400. We have relationships with Westland Toys R Us, the Toys R Us in Southgate, where we receive merchandise in thousands of dollars of excess toys that are seasonal clearance items that they give to us. In addition, we're also partnered with the Babies R Us Store in Taylor, and four different Carter's locations that supply children's clothing to us. Other partners here in the community that have supported our organization for years is Westland Mini Storage. They donate two storage units to our program every year, so that we can store all the goodies that we're collecting throughout the year. Gary Bolson and Men on the Move are always generous to the Goodfellows in donating trucking, so that we can move all the stuff that's in the storage units. The Westland Police Department, I'd like to highlight Sergeant Wilkie and Officer Paris for their efforts in the Stuff a Swat Truck event this year. I'm very grateful for them, their efforts, and the fact that they included two other charities in the program this year, so that we could share the loot. There were over 30 businesses and city offices that collected donations for us, continued support from Big B Coffee, B&amp;B Hydro, Crunch Fitness was a new partner this year. Not only did they host a collection box for us, but they also adopted three families. Family Video has been a continued member in this collection program, where people can drop off new toys and non-perishable food items for our program. So, it's interesting to me, every year I make this list, and I'm thinking about all the people that come and help, and it's hundreds and thousands of people that have participated in the Goodfellow program each and every Christmas, and I'm always overwhelmed by the support that the city comes out and gives. In addition to all of the local businesses and support that we receive through the Adopted Program, I wanted to highlight that the city of Westland gives us resources from the Housing Department, the City Clerk's Office, the Friendship Center, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Public Works Department, and from WLND. So, it is a true partnership between the Goodfellows and all of the business members and the city itself to serve these families. I always feel really proud when I make this list, because it's just stunning to me. We had over 80 volunteers show up and pack all of the gift bags on December 2nd and 3rd, and there was a youth baseball team with over 20 members there packing gift bags for other kids. As I kind of wrap up our 2017 program, I do want to highlight that I am actually stepping down from the Goodfellows over the next 12 months. It's been nine years that I've been doing Goodfellows, and I've had a great time, but I just can't do it anymore. It's taken over my life for the better part of two months every year, and it's overwhelmed me, it's overwhelmed my marriage, and my business. So, I'm excited to announce that we'll be holding a spring meeting in May of 2018, where we're looking for new leaders in the Goodfellows. I have a couple of new contacts, and I'm excited to share the program that we've created over the last 10 years, and I'm excited to hear their ideas moving forward. I hope that if there is interest within the community to participate in the organization, that people will contact us through the Goodfellows website, which is westlandgoodfellows.org, send us an email. I'll be more than happy to put you on that email list for our spring meeting, and notify you of when and where that's gonna happen. But I thoroughly enjoyed my time with the Goodfellows, and I'll stick around and be willing to keep my hands in it, but as far as all of the tasks that I currently do, I just can't do it anymore. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Heather. You've done a great job for the Goodfellows. Alexis? Alexis Tharp? We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone...oh, Glenn, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should have talked to you before the meeting, but I didn't get a chance to. I did want a couple of updates for the members of the council and the mayor and everyone. As everyone knows, there's a 15% discretionary fund in the parks fund in the village, and it's cemented in as of the last approval of the language in there. And this week, we're poised to approve $83,399. Mayor, I'm sure you're aware of that also, and should be approved this week through the committee tomorrow, and then through the full commission on Thursday. Again, this is not from a large fund, but it's actually Westland's portion for the last, I believe, last two years, and so that'll make some nice improvements at both of those parks. And appreciate the renewed efforts in the parks. I think the kids are really gonna see a lot of benefit from it. I also wanted to mention, folks, because I know I'm dodging potholes every day as I'm headed downtown, and there's a DPS hotline number, it's a new one. There was a previous number that I think has been disconnected now. The new number is 844, and it is a toll-free number, 844-929-6311, and it's a 24/7 number, and there's a real person that'll answer that call. So, please feel free to pass that number around. Again, it's 844-929-6311. I also want to mention, we have a 105-year-old lady in Westland that turned, I believe it was on December 1st, or January 1st, rather, and she just turned 105 years old. This is Phyllis Brown, and I think Mayor is gonna, we're going to go over and wish her a happy birthday, and have a little celebration for her. And congrats again to the Westland Meteors, and also, on a sad note, deepest sympathy to the family of Marguerite Wojewski for their loss. Marguerite passed away this week, earlier this week, and was a very lengthy resident of Westland. She celebrated her 95th birthday on the 5th, so she didn't quite make it to 100, but she was a fighter all the way along, and really someone that was very dedicated to the Norway community and to the city of Westland. But anyway, thank you.
Thanks. We'll now move on to citizens' comments on the agenda. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
I noticed there's only Item C, Official City Newspaper, The Observer and Eccentric. For years, I backed the...I can't even think of it, the other paper, and I'm very disappointed in them, and I'm glad to see that even though they print it the smug, dirty, nasty things in the paper, I'm glad to see that the city council and the mayor have decided against the other paper. And can you explain Item D? It's approval of lease agreement with VAR Technology to provide the Fire Department with critical technologies necessary to collect patient care information while rendering emergency medical services. I think that's a great thing, I just wonder how it's gonna work, and with HIPAA laws, is there a problem, or whatever? And I think that's it.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Kevin Coleman, as a Westland resident, I want to encourage the council members to please support Item C, to give the Westland Observer the bid for official city newspaper. I think their reporting standards, their editorial standards, and their distribution are probably a lot higher than the current one, and I'd like to see them become the city newspaper. And then also, Item D, similar question to Mrs. McKinney. If you could just tell us what VAR Technology is, when you get a chance, and how that works. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Hi there, everyone. How's it going tonight? Anyway, Number C, I do approve that. Hopefully, the Observer is better than the other one, because there was a lot of bad publicity at that time. Didn't like it either. I will support the Observer. Number D, approval agreement on, and I do support the Fire Department on their good work, and I'd like to know what that's all about, too, because with HIPAA laws and stuff, you gotta be really careful. Approval of purchase of two Ford 150 Supercabs, wow. Well, $50,064? Well, I'd like to know more about that, too. I do support that. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hammond. There were a couple of questions on Item D. Not sure if the chief wants to handle that one? Sure.
Yeah, through the chair, the VR technology would probably be best described by our Department of Innovation and Technology, but basically what this is, is just for a lease agreement for our new laptop computers. Our old ones are outdated, they don't support the technology that the state has switched to for compliance with HIPAA, which you guys have referred to. These new laptops are encrypted, they have encryption technology that allow us to transmit HIPAA-protected information, and it's a technology that our firefighters and paramedics use on scene to collect patient data and do the proper patient reporting to the state.
Thanks. And then on the truck purchases, Mr. Martin?
Council President, these are replacing existing...
For our fleet, two of the trucks that these are replacing are no longer in service, and the third one's a 2001 four-by-two pickup, so these will be upgrading our fleet, per our plan, and the CIP in the water.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Councilman Londo?
Yes, Council President Gabbott, I'd like to move Item C to New Business 1A.
There's a motion to move Item C to 1A. Is the maker and the supporter of the motion okay with that move? Okay. We'll make that Item 1A. Are there any other discussion on the consent calendar? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held January 2, 2018. Request from Motown Howley Owners Group, Chapter Number 2357, to hold their 24th Annual Toy Run on Sunday, September 23, 2018. Approval of lease agreement with VAR Technology to provide the Fire Department with the critical technology necessary to collect patient care information while rendering emergency medical services. The lease is for 36 months and an amount of $889.83 per month. Approval of purchase of Ford F-250 pickup- Approval of purchase of Ford F-250 pickup truck for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $24,839. Approval of purchase of two Ford F-150 Supercabs for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $50,064. Introduction of ordinance 179A4, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending Chapter 62, Section 62406 of the Westland City Code concerning minors in possession of alcohol. Adoption of prepared resolution between the City of Westland and the Michigan Department of Transportation to establish a request for funding, designate an agent, attest to the existence of funds, and commit to implementing a maintenance program for the East Newburg sidewalk from Joy Road extending south 259 feet and north of McKinney Drive to north of Russell Drive. Last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution for City of Westland poverty exemption for 2018. Moving on to new business, item 1A. Approval of bid for official city newspaper. Administration recommends the Lowbider, Observer, and Eccentric newspaper in the amount of $410 per column inch.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hammond. Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Gabo. Got some calls from residents and heard from residents all throughout the last year about unsolicited newspaper delivery to their driveways, to their porch. Residents that don't wish to receive the newspaper, not just the Observer newspaper, but any newspaper. I had some calls this week for residents, we had a lot of snow. Residents sucked up the newspaper in their snowblower and didn't, weren't too happy with that. So I'd be willing to approve the bid tonight with the contingent of some type of opt-out program for residents that don't wish to receive a newspaper, if that's something the city attorney can speak to or...
Is, is there a representative from the Observer even here this evening? I don't see one. Mr. Fasson?
Counsel President, thank you. Certainly the council can adopt a motion to approve the bid contingent on reasonable conditions. Here, here the condition I hear is to set up some sort of opt-out program should City of Westland residents choose to opt out of the free delivery. It would be obviously up then to Observer Eccentric to either accept or reject the proposal as amended. If they choose not to, then you're back into the category of trying to figure out who your official city newspaper is going to be, which you need promptly. So that, the motion could be made in that, that fashion, I suppose.
Councilman Johnson?
Question if I may to the city attorney. When this bid was put out, it was not put out with that condition in it, was it not? They bid on it as, the city asked them to bid. I don't know how we go back now and tell them that you're going to have to make another condition apply to this. I think if we approve it, we're stuck with what we bid out. If we want to pull the bids back in and send them back out, I would advise against that. I just believe if that's going to be a condition next year, we should apply it to the bid and not make it a requirement this year.
Just to respond to the comment and question, you're correct, it was not a condition of the bid package. And you're correct, the city has the right to accept or reject any bids that were submitted. So you could reject this bid entirely. As I say, I think what the proposal is, is to make that modification and essentially leave it to the paper decide if it wants to reject the proposal at that point. Unclear to me, and certainly unclear, I suspect to council, as to whether or not, what sort of cost implications might be involved in this opt-out program. And certainly that would have an impact or could have an impact on the Observer and Eccentric's view of the column inch proposal that they made.
Councilman Londo, what, how would you, I guess at this point, we can suggest that they implement a opt-out program, but trying to make it part of this, as part of what was put out to bid. And I would encourage the administration next year during the bid process to make that part of our specifications so that residents aren't forced to have papers delivered that, that don't want them, so. Yes, Councilman Johnson?
I appreciate your comments. It could be a major headache to lay that on them now. If it's in the bid next time, they can make some preparations to figure out how they're going to do that. Driveways are real close, sometimes addresses aren't out in plain sight for them to, and their delivery people like it when they throw it in every driveway because then they don't have to hit and miss here and there. But I, I agree with you, I think if it's going to be part of the bid, we should do that next year. We could ask them and suggest, as you said, I agree with that, but to try and compel them now, I, I think we would be wrong if we did that, and I agree with you. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Or option of postponing it to the next meeting so we can discuss this with them? To see if they're willing to, is that? Okay.
Not, not at least, according to charter, we have to vote on the official newspaper at the second meeting in January. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Londo, for, for bringing up this topic. This is something that the City of Westland takes a lot of complaints on this and over the years, as the Observer has been purchased by, now they're owned by Gannett, we're getting further and further away from the decision makers on these type of things. But we have residents that, that call us on a weekly basis and they, they call the local office and they, they don't seem to get any sort of resolution. So I kind of like Councilman Londo's idea here. I can tell you that this will be our one chance. I think if we let this get by, I think we'll have to tell our residents that they're looking at another 12-month window before we have probably an option to, to address this. But I think this is probably our best time. I'm not sure if a postponement satisfies the charter or not, but at the end of the day, we could certainly, if there was a contingency, we could certainly sit down with them, we'd have their attention. But administration will, you know, we'll, we'll move forward however council votes tonight. Thank you.
Council, Councilman Hammond? Oh, your light was on, so.
Calling for the question. I just voted up or down. I guess that's what we got to do at this point.
Okay, so we're voting on the, the motion as it currently exists, right? For accepting the bid for the Observer as the official newspaper for the city. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Gabo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number one under new business. Confirmation of reappointment of James Fasson of Fasson Von LLP as Director of the Department of Law for the term of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. I know it's tough to get people to applaud for the, for attorneys, but...
Once every two years if I'm watching.
New business, item two. Confirmation of reappointment of Plant Moran and Associates as city auditor to provide auditing and financial consulting services to the city effective January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019, according to Public Act 2 of 1968.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. And I know there's a couple of representatives from Plant Moran in the, in the audience here this evening.
New business, item three. Nomination of regular member of the public to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2019. Mr. Michael Harris is the current public member.
Open the floor for nominations?
I move to nominate Michael Harris.
There any other nominations? Any other nominations? Move to close nominations? Motion to close by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item four. Appointment of regular member of the public to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2019. Mr. Michael Harris has been nominated.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item five. Nomination of council member to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2019. Council has recommended Councilman Jim Hart as the council member to replace former member Christine Ciccarelli-Bryant.
Motion by, or, I'm sorry.
Nomination.
Nomination by Councilman Johnson for Mr. Hart. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? Motion to close by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item six. Appointment of council member to the Nankin Transit Commission to serve a two-year term with the term to expire December 31, 2019. Councilman Jim Hart has been nominated.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, is there support? Supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to speak to item number six and to express my support for Jim Hart being named the, to this commission. However, I also wanted to add that I had expressed concern relative to my having discussed with the council president three different seats within the commissions or committees or as a liaison that I expressed interest in, in having not received any acknowledgement. And so I did reach out to Attorney Fauzon today who clarified for me my concern whether there was bias or possible discriminatory action with my request being ignored. And I had the chance to meet with council president and pro temp today. They assured me that they are not ignoring me, although my request for appointment did come in a week before Jim Hart made a request. And so my, again, I support you Jim, and I am also hopeful that going forward, that I too would have the opportunity to join the open and available seats on outside commissions and/or committees, as I expressed both verbally and in writing to the council president and copy the mayor and the deputy mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Council President. I do want to vocalize, excuse me, some of the same concerns. As council members, we all have opportunities to sit on committees or boards or be liaisons to different, in different capacities. So I guess in this concern, I'm a bit concerned is the process, as none of the other council members were contacted for this position or requested if we wanted to serve on this, the Nankin Trans, Transit Commission. I don't think that Mr. Hart will do a bad job on it. My concern is the process that is, you know, starting to unfold here as far as who gets cho, picked, chosen without any other discussion to other council members. So I'd like to just request that there's further transparency by the council president as we move forward.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven. Approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Green. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the... Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor, council, and city officials. My name is Chloe Winfrey and I am the sister of William Marshall. We're all aware of the incident that occurred at the Westland Police Department on December 10th, 2017. Today we're here to get questions answered that we weren't able to get answered. We've asked for videotape, the audio of what happened in the jail. We asked for EMS reports, the body cam, the body cam, the dash cam. And our response we get is, is under investigation. But what we can tell you is that he ingested drugs. So basically what we want to know is, in a situation like this, what is the policy On December, on December 10th, William was pulled over and officer says that it looked like Marshall ingested drugs because he had white residue around his mouth. So our question is, in a situation like this, number one, did the officers attempt to make him throw it up, make it come out of him? Did they attempt to contact EMS right in the beginning? Or why didn't the officers transport him to the hospital himself? Instead, they took him to the jail. Neither option was taken in consideration. While the officers, either knowing or suspected that he did ingest drug, and, and, and dress, ingest drugs, they decided to take him to jail. EMS was called the first time and they denied, he was, they denied him to be taken to the hospital. They was denied to take him to the hospital. I'm sorry, I know I only got three minutes, my apologies.
I'm assuming you're speaking on behalf of the, of a larger group?
Yes, I'm speaking on...
So I'll, I'll extend you some additional time.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of my family and everyone. And you, so when EMS came out the first time, you know, my, he was begging for help, pleading for his life. He didn't know what was wrong, but he knew something was wrong and that something wasn't Till it came a second time when EMS was called. That second time when EMS was called, it was too late. In the light of the, of the decision made by the Westland Police Department, my brother, a father, a son, a fiance, a cousin, a nephew, he died while he was in custody, while he was in the Westland Police, he died while he was in jail, while he was in the Westland Police custody because he was denied medical attention. And we did learn that the first set of EMS that came out is on administrative leave. So our question is, another thing we would like to know is, why are the officers not suspended? Why are they still on active duty? We asking questions. We demanding that the police be suspended until the investigation is done. And to the mayor, to the city of Westland, it would have, it might have, would have, you know, I don't know if it would have helped or made us feel any better... you know, I don't know if it would have helped or made us feel any better for it to be addressed by you guys. Because regarding what happened to William Marshall in the city of Westland, at the Westland Police Department. And we're seeking and demanding justice in his name. Thank you.
Ma'am? Thank you, Council President. Ms. Winfrey and to the rest of the Marshall family, on behalf of the city of Westland, I'd like to extend our condolences. I know it probably doesn't mean, it doesn't make it any better tonight, but Westland, we pride ourselves as being a compassionate city, and we truly, truly send our condolences. We're going to make sure, you got my word, that I'm going to make sure, this mayor, that everything under my power that I do to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. At the end of the day, your brother, your son, your, I know the whole family's here. This happened while they were in the custody of the Westland Police Department. So like I said, we're going to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And then while you're here tonight, the police chief, the fire chief, the city attorney, they can try to answer, you know, to the extent that they can, so. But once again, on behalf of the entire city of Westland, we truly are sorry. We, and like I said, we're going to make sure nothing like this happens again.
Chief? Chief?
Through the chair to the Marshall family. I understand that you're upset, and I would be too. I don't blame you. I know you want answers. We all want answers. You're going to get the answers. We're all going to get the answers. I know it's a hard thing for me to ask you to do, but when you said in regards to the practice, you know, instead of the Westland Police Department conducting this investigation and having anybody have any question of the integrity of the investigation, I asked the Michigan State Police to come in and conduct an independent investigation on their own. So what I have to do as police chief is I give them everything we've got. I assure you that every minute of the contact we had with Mr. Marshall is under audio and video recording. There's, everything's been given to them, but now I have to step back and be patient and let them do their investigation. It's going to be an investigation done by the Michigan State Police and by the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. It's not that I won't release the videos to you or that information, I can't right now, they won't allow me to. Part of what I've got to do is respect their investigation and let them do a thorough investigation. So they've restricted my ability on what I can do. I will say that I feel that when this investigation is done, it's not going to be a question of whether or not Mr. Marshall was mistreated by the police department, but whether or not he got the medical attention that he needed. And we will all get those answers together. I wish I could give you more, but right now I just can't.
Chief? Mr. Fasson?
Just, again, put condolences out to the family and confirm what the police chief has said. We've been instructed by the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office and the Michigan State Police to allow their investigation to proceed and are not in a position under the Freedom of Information Act or otherwise to release any of the information that you're currently seeking. But as soon as that investigation is done, I'm sure it'll be provided to all.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
No.
Sir?
Good evening, council, mayor, administration. My name is William Miller. I'm the current president of the Inkster, Western Wayne National Action Network. We're having a lot of problems with this situation with Mr. Marshall and how he was treated up until this, to cause his demise at this point. I have a problem anytime, gentlemen, whether, whatever happened in the traffic stop, for him to be on his way to home and to come into contact with the Westland Police Group and not be able to go home anymore is a problem. My question is, why in a situation like that, just out of respect for the community and the people, would the officers or the folks involved not be put off the job, pay or without, whatever? Why are they still doing that? Because that looks bad to the people here. It looks like the folks do not care about the plight of the community that that gentleman came from. If everybody else gets to go on about their lives and we have to mourn and suffer, that is a problem for us. As far, as far as what the tape, excuse me, as far as what the tape releases go, and policy that you have, the things that you do have the ability to reach, as far as EMS reports, things that we normally could get, and policy changes, if, at this point, everybody would know about this situation, are there policy changes at least being bagged about as far as things that you have seen, that you feel could be improved upon or changed, that will make this process go better and not happen again? Also, I've been here previously and spoke to the administration, and I was told that the state police was involved in the, in the investigation of the situation. But for us, state police, as great as that may be, as you're doing internal investigations and releasing it to the state for impartial, me and many in my community don't think the state police is impartial as it will be, and it doesn't make us comfortable that somebody wouldn't be released the tapes in equal time as everybody else. If the state police was getting it, why would the prosecutor not be able to get it at the same time so that we can all be, feel as though we're being protected? As opposed to where we are now, feeling as we're twisting the wind, and folks don't truly care about our plight? So, questions like that I'd like to get answered. We got a lot to say about this. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Yes, Melanie? Chief, just, Melanie, just a second. Chief?
I just wanted to quickly, just give you one quick answer on one of the questions you had there was that, just because the Michigan State Police are doing the investigation, maybe just a way to clarify it, as their information gathers, they're going to gather all the information, and they provide it to Kim Worley's office, the Wayne County Prosecutor. So it will be an actual, an investigation between the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office and the Michigan State Police. Kim Worley's office has all the videos, they have all of that information right now, and that's part of the ongoing investigation. And it will be something that takes some time, but yes, that information is in her office's hands.
Melanie?
Good evening, council members and President Gabbout. My name is Melody Hines. I'm with the Wayne Westland Board of Education, and I've come today because we have a vision for the Wayne Westland Community Schools and Partnerships. Wayne Westland Community School District is nestled in the suburban community, and its motto is "All American City." The district serves several communities, which includes parts of Westland, Wayne, portions of Romulus, Canton, Dearborn Heights, and Inkster. We're proud to include our communities, which is an electric mix of socioeconomic, racial, ethnic, religious, and cultural political diversity, and we'd like to celebrate that with all of our students in the district. The mission of the Wayne Westland Community School District is as follows. The Wayne Westland Community Schools, in cooperation with the community, will educate and will prepare all of the students to be knowledgeable, responsible, and contributing members of society. Over the years, we have seen a decline in involvement in our community and our schools. So we know with research evidence and just plain common sense that our children do better when our community is involved around them. As the new superintendent of Wayne Westland Community Schools, she is honoring the community and the parent aspect, and she wants to call out to the community to help the children in the Wayne Westland School District. The vision is that we become the lighthouse, not only in this area, but for the community, the county, the state, and the nation. The vision involves our community reinvesting in our schools in a passionate and powerful way. Dr. Shelley Holt, our new superintendent, has begun her vision with the future of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. She has restructured the district to ensure these partnerships are cultivated and are nurtured to beneficial, not only to our students, but to the employees, as she has, for our community as a whole. She's expanded the segment of our organization to include employee, community, and governmental relations departments, in which involves the shifting and direction of positions and partnerships to expand with the Family Resource Center and support three more full-time support psychologists for our families and our students. So what it is, is a call to action. We have made partnerships with local communities, churches, civic organizations, and we are asking them if they would like to adopt a classroom, adopt a school. Last Sunday, New Hope in Wayne, Michigan, the first church in our organization, actually sponsored one of the schools at David Hicks. So as a superintendent, and I don't have a lot of time, but that's what we're calling on. And if you guys, any like businesses who wants to help sponsor, mentor, help volunteer in the classrooms, even in the lunchrooms, we're asking you to call the Wayne Westland School District, and Dr. Holt's number for the school district is 734-431-3140. We're asking for your help because it's so important for our communities to reinvest in our students.
Anyone on my right? Ma'am?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm bringing it back to the plight of William Marshall and the Marshall family. My name is Crystal Linton. I am also with the Inkster, Western Wayne County Chapter of the National Action Network, and we're standing here with the Marshall family. We've been standing with them, we've been grieving with them. We are a community in grief. And there's a critical question not been answered, but before I bring that up, I just want to say that we knew that this would eventually happen with the Westland Police Department. It was, it was brewing, and we knew that someone would die at the hand of the Westland Police Department. Our community feels that Westland Police is almost reining martial law on us. Inkster borders Westland, and Westland even patrols Inkster. And there is a portion of Inkster that Westland took back in the 50s. So they harass our cab drivers, harass our citizens, we're treated like criminals, and we knew that eventually someone would die at the hand of the Westland Police. We have a whole community here with the Marshall family saying enough is enough. Sensitivity training, a police department that looks more like the citizens you serve, and that includes Inkster. So it has to be more than the 10% of African Americans in Westland. The police department needs to look more like the citizens it serve, but the first demand, the first demand of justice and humanity is that these officers at least be suspended. There's enough evidence to say that there was something done wrong and that they should be suspended. That would make our community feel a lot better, at least that we're cared about, that black lives do matter. The question was not answered. Why haven't they been suspended during this investigation? Why haven't they at least been told? No, no. You don't have a man in your custody and you refuse him medical attention until he dies on your, on your watch. Why haven't that happened? We have not even seen a smack on the hand. And of course, when all the investigation is done, we'd like to see suspension, if not prosecution. Show us that our community matters to Westland. Show us that we are free to travel about the country. We have to leave Inkster to drive through Westland, to drive through Livonia, to drive through Taylor, to drive through all of these cities, and right now, we feel that we are not free to move around the country. And it was just a matter of time before one of us died at the hand of the Westland Police. That's how our community feels. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Thomas, Westland, Michigan. I want to just give my condolences to the family. I'm very sorry, and we will keep you left out of prayer. But I have to get up here and speak, and I'm sure my husband will feel the same way. We live in Westland, we lived in Westland for a very long time. I am a citizen of Westland, and I believe it was just last year when the last law enforcement event we had at the Westland Police Department. Well, one of the things I do believe, it was, I was very thankful for it, chief, meeting all the different law enforcements that was there in different positions. And one of the things, you know, when you meet one of them on a personal level, I found the compassion in a lot of them. I am a citizen of Westland. I do feel comfortable. I am thankful to be living in Westland. I am grateful for the police department here in Westland. And one of the things I do have to say, and I will say, this is the one, one of the most compassionate police department I believe we have in Michigan. I am sorry what happened, but I am a citizen, and I will stand up here and say I am thankful for the Westland Police Department, and we have their protection. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes.
Tim Gilbert, a Westland resident and also a business owner here in Westland. I just want to remind everyone that today was the victim impact statements on all of the victims that suffered from Larry Nassar, the doctor that sexually molested all of his victims. They did 26 of 98 victims today, gave their victim impact statements. They will be starting again tomorrow. Thanks.
Anyone on my right? Mrs. McKinnney?
I sent you an email today, and I didn't get an answer, so I'm going to bring it out tonight. Today, my neighbor was evicted. I want to know when the city of Westland or any city stopped taking court cases before somebody's evicted. They dumped his stuff out, it's the coldest day, one of the colder days of the month, and he's a 100% disabled vet. Is this the way we treat our vets? And this is the same landlord as the man that comes up here every week griping, "I thought he was wrong." No, he was right. This is not compassion. And the man is freezing, he's sick, and they dumped all his stuff on the front lawn, half of it's in my driveway now so he can pick it up in the morning. Something's got to be done. And when did these laws change? I thought you had to have a court case, and there were so many days, and then, you know, so many other days for it to be evicted. We've changed things, it certainly hasn't been on an ordinance through the council in the last 20 years, because I've been here, everyone. So I think something's got to be done about this kind of stuff. This is safe step? This is not a safe step when you put people out in the middle of the winter. And I am upset.
Anyone on my left? Yes.
First, I'd like to thank Mayor Wild for offering the Westland Librarians their job back last June. I've always meant to come back and say that. I know you guys missed me. I was happy to see that you followed almost every suggestion I gave you from day one, and that also included the resignations of the entire library board and the library director. Despite following my advice, however, I was disheartened to learn that you were telling people I was an outsider and an instigator. I suspect that has a lot to do with your misunderstanding about what librarians and other library workers do. This is a profession about care and assuming the best of people so you can help them. I worked in this community for five and a half years. I was deeply invested in the welfare of our patrons and our services in this community. I was not an outsider, and I only left the library because of the incompetent and mean-spirited administration that you put in place. My official reason was that I wanted to stay home with my newborn, but I wanted to really leave, I really wanted to leave because it was a toxic work environment. So after my son was born, I bit my tongue and came back for two months so I could train two people to take over the adult literacy program I started, which was the only one available in Western Wayne County at the time. 15% of adults cannot read. 15% of adults cannot read in this country. The roles of public libraries are evolving, and they are increasingly about filling the gaps where social services are not enough to help increasingly disenfranchised populations. Several libraries are now having staff go through naloxone administration training so they can immediately help patrons overdosing on heroin. When I worked at the library, I personally called EMS for a patron who was clearly physically struggling at the library, but for some reason, the dispatcher sent the police who came and just kicked him out. He didn't get any help. So I'm coming at what happened to William Marshall in the Westland City Jail from a perspective of care, and what I see, it's a philosophy that seems fundamentally antithetical to how your police force operates. They assume the worst about people and act accordingly. I understand the worst about someone who has a gun pointed in your face, but what about somebody who is already locked up and begging for help? The witnesses who saw this? That the officers laughed at him and that he died like a dog? I believe them. Who wants to publicly admit they were in jail for the night unless you saw something so horrifying that it's giving you nightmares? No one's going to come out and admit that. He died in that jail. That jail was a crime scene, and that's where the investigation should have taken place. If the cops on duty that night hadn't turned away emergency responders, you would have already released the tapes by now to absolve your police of any wrongdoing. You told the paper you're looking for answers yourself. We know you have the answers. You've seen the video. It'd be easy to pull video feed. I've done it myself when I worked at the library and we had incidents. I don't care if the state police are doing it, the investigation. We all know what happens when the police investigate themselves. There is very little precedent for justice in any investigation of police negligence. And if you had to have the family come here to say something, Mayor Wild, you could have taken, you know, followed Councilwoman Green's lead. She shared their funeral arrangements, she shared information to people to donate to his burial expenses, and don't let them shut you down, you have three minutes, anyone can speak.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Ms. Everett?
I'm Riesta Everett, and probably the oldest resident here from the city of Westland. I was here before it was a city, and I have been an advocate for it since I've been here, since 1955. It's the same old soup, warm over. What happened to a citizen from Westland, from Inkster, could easily have been a citizen from Westland soon. Yes, when I purchased my house in Westland, it was not to be a beginner's house, it was my home's here, and still is. We have city council persons come and go, mayors, police chiefs, but the problems still remain. We have to stop telling people what they want to hear and what they should hear. We have some problems. I have talked with my representatives, each and every one of them, and I request, stop reacting when we supposed to be proacting. I think we all owe the citizens of Inkster and the southeast Westland an apology. Second-class citizenship is over. This is a new day and a new year. I want to wake up everybody and tell them, let's get this together, together, because this is all of us, city. And Mr. Mayor, I got your back if you do it right. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Ray?
First off, I was just thinking about sitting back there today, I listened to the passion. I can go back a few years ago that. Let's talk about the police department a little bit, because I do support them. But I'm talking about years ago when I went and tried to talk to one of them, even with people with disabilities or whatever, they didn't understand, but they do now. Doesn't mean every officer is bad, which they're not. He maybe could have been one, and it's hard to say. We'll just have to wait and see what the investigation do. But I know the police, they do their job day after day, and I think they are the passionateest ones in this city. They have changed, they have creditations, they were done, and, you know, I'll stand behind them because I'm sorry of what happened, and hopefully whoever, you know, whatever it be, be investigated. But I do support the police department, and I've been hearing it for a while on TV, I'm concerned, you know, even some of the states. I think Westland is better trained, and they were years ago. Maybe they still need some more passion and training in areas. You know, like the mayor was talking about tonight, it won't happen again. I mean, so, and hopefully, you know, when this investigation comes out, I hope it comes out the right way. But other than that, I do support the fire department, I think you guys are doing a good job, and even the councils up here are listening. Things are getting a little bit, you know, things are getting better, and we need to have this passion in this city. We all need to work together, not work against each other. So sometimes the police officers need to, you know, they can't be everywhere, that's impossible. So my say is, I care about them, my passion, I've been here for years, and I have fought my way in life, and I will continue standing, advocating for people. My passion will stand. I love the city of Westland, and I will still take a stand. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right?
Good evening to everyone that's here. First and foremost, I would like to give honor to the leadership that's here. I'm standing here on behalf of the family because the victim that died in the custody of the police department was a part of my family. I must say that 2017, without a doubt, one of the most difficult things that I had to do is I had to officiate and eulogize William Marshall. In the midst of that circumstance, it was very difficult because even in the midst of having to serve the family, which is my family, it was hard to go through that entire week, go through that circumstance with the strength that was necessary to carry out the duties and the responsibilities that were bestowed upon me. And as earlier stated, I don't know if the question was misinterpreted, I don't know if the question was, the correct phraseology was used, but I think at a minimum, what would be just and what would be appropriate is if we revisit the question that for some reason unbeknownst to me has been ignored, has been dismissed, and has not been answered. So I reaffirm and restate the question that was asked momentarily ago. Why was it that the police officers that were involved in the open investigation? Why were there not, and why aren't they currently, at a minimum, on administrative leave, of absence, or suspended? And I think it's fair, I think it's fair, and I think it's appropriate, and I think out of respect for my family and for the citizens of both Westland and also Inkster, and whomever this situation adversely affected, I think that it is appropriate that we not leave this tribunal until that is answered. Secondarily, the other question that I would like answered as well is, since the victim passed away in the custody of the police department, when someone is in your custody, and the reason that they may be incarcerated is irrelevant, if they need medical attention, why was he denied medical attention? And what would be the protocol? What is the standard protocol of when someone is in your custody and they're requesting medical attention? Why was he denied it? Why didn't he not get it? And also, why were not the police officers suspended? Why are they still receiving taxpayers' dollars for their paychecks during this open investigation? I think at a minimum, and I don't mean to belabor the point, I don't mean to be insulting or disrespectful, because I give respect to all leadership, but at a minimum, the same respect that we're giving, the same respect that I'm standing here giving, that I'm extending, I want, I think it would be appropriate if it's reciprocated. And the way to reciprocate that is to simply answer the question that has continuously been asked.
Chief?
I'm sorry, through the chair to the Marshall family. I'm not going to go anywhere after the meeting, so I will sit down with you guys and answer this. I'm sorry. I will say this, again, I've got to be, out of respect to the Michigan State Police, there's not a lot that I'm able to say about it. I will say that there's nowhere in our policies does it say that if a person needs to go to the hospital that we don't send them to the hospital. I can tell you that. So again, it's kind of difficult for me to talk about things when I'm being told that in order to respect their investigation that I can't talk about it, but what I will do is after this meeting, I'll sit down there with them, I'll try to answer a little more in detail some of the questions that you do have for me.
Mr. Fasson?
If I can weigh in on the question of suspensions and investigations, from the employee investigation and suspension, and the criminal investigation takes precedent. So there's a process by which, because obviously the consequences are greater, right? So there is a criminal investigation ongoing that limits employee investigation into activity, and as we look at, as you, I'm sure know, the police as well as the fire are organized and have unions and collective bargaining agreements, so we are taking all of those factors into account as we try to evaluate how to proceed forward. So I think that gives some context to the problem that we have.
Why did they suspend EMS workers and not the police?
Mr. Fasson?
I'm going to, through the chair, ask that the fire chief respond to that because it's under a different statutory scheme.
Chief Stradner?
And through the chair, my condolences go out to the family as well. The reason that the EMS workers were put on administrative leave is we have, the Westland Fire Department is a state licensed EMS agency. We have a responsibility to report to the state as well as Wayne County, which is our Wayne County Health and Emergency Medical Services, which are the protocols that we operate under. Our firefighters are the highest medical authority on scene. They have to make the determination as to whether or not a patient gets transported to the hospital. We have to, through an internal investigation, decide, did our firefighters not follow protocol because they were told not to by the Westland Fire Department? If so, that in fact is a violation of Wayne County protocol by our EMS workers. Did our EMS workers make a determination that he did not need to go to the hospital and not take him? Was proper protocol or procedure followed for that? Or did Mr. Marshall make the determination on scene that he did not want to go to the hospital on his own accord? Because under state license agency, we have those three unknowns, we can't keep our paramedics on the road working. When we met with our emergency medical directors, one of the first questions they asked is, are these paramedics off the road? It doesn't necessarily mean that they did something wrong, it's because we have some unknowns that we can't allow them to continue to work so they were put on administrative leave.
May I add that with respect to what the fire chief just said? If that be the case, and just following that logic to its end, then I totally understand that process, which was explained. If there's two separate entities that were involved in some kind of way in the situation regarding William Marshall, why then was not the police officers put on administrative leave as well? Because if you take that position and say, well, we have all of these unknowns and these variables that through the, you know, the course of the investigation that's being conducted come later, and until it comes later, you can't have them on the road working, you know, as you stated, how is it, how is that logic not applicable to the police officers who had direct contact with Mr. Marshall? Had direct contact. You guys didn't have any contact with him until he came.
Sir?
Until you came on the scene. So I would like that question.
Mr. Fasson?
Again, the difference between the two units, the EMS and the police, have to deal with the different statutory schemes under which they operate. So there is a difference because of their, of the overriding rules and regulations impacting each of the different units. Understand your position, if one, why not the other, but that's the answer, is that EMS has a different statutory scheme, and that's what's controlled that decision. Thank you, Council President.
Thanks.
With all due respect to the mayor, council, the question is still, why did they not suspend or put the police? Because that's a non-answer, sir, no disrespect to you, but that's a non-answer. The same question. Why is it good for one but not the other?
I can't answer it any better, sir, other than what I have, which is, the EMS is because of how they're governed on their licensure. If that wasn't in place, they probably wouldn't be suspended at this point, and then they'd be on equal footing, but that's the answer. It may not be satisfactory, but it really is the answer.
I have one other question. There was a statement made on the 12th of December by the chief of police, and the statement was, "We decided, we decided that we would monitor Mr. Marshall. We would monitor him." So my question is, the police, are they the police, or are they paramedics? Are they EMS? You see what I'm asking, sir?
Chief? Through the chair. To answer that, I wouldn't have said, "we made that decision," I would have said that the decision was made. The police department, we're not doctors, we're not medical staff. When we have a person that's either claiming to have a medical issue, is having a medical issue, we call the Westland Fire Department and we take their advice on whether or not a person needs to be transported to a hospital or monitored. We don't make that decision.
Check the interview you did on the 12th with the news.
If I misspoke, you know, I apologize, but the way that I worded it is the way that it does occur.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, council, and thank you all for being here tonight. Just two quick things. One is, first of all, council, thank you for recognizing the young individuals from the Westland Meteors. As you can see, they're very proud of their city, and we're very proud of them, so thank you for taking a few minutes tonight to recognize them. Then the last thing is just once again to the Marshall family. Thank you for being here tonight, and I can tell you that I mean it when I say that we're going to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again, and you've got my word that we're going to keep an open line of communication with the family, and I've tried to make the police chief, the fire chief, and the city attorney available to you, and I'll continue to do that so that we can continue to bring some closure, and ultimately, if justice is deserved, then justice as well. Thank you.
The city attorney.
Thank you, Council President. Just quickly, on behalf of myself and, and my firm, I want to thank the mayor and the council for the reappointment and the vote of confidence. We look forward to serving the, the city of Westland for the next two years. Thank you.
Move on to comments from the council. We'll start with Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Just a comment, the MLK celebration, mayor, it was great, once again. Mr. Perkins was there and, and lit the place up, did a fine job, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't have mentioned two of our own, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas. The show was great. I've commented, I complimented you on your hornplay. I didn't know this lady was a star. You, you were the star of the show over there the other day. And I, I just have a question, and I didn't get a chance to ask you the other day. Was that a traditional dance, or is that a scheme that you put together? You do have a great gift, I'll tell you that. And, and the other thing again with, with you, sir, I understand that you are putting together a few songs. If you sell them, you must promise I'm your first customer. Thank you.
Councilman Londo.
Thanks, President Godbout. I remember to turn my mic on this time. I want to offer my condolences to the family of William Marshall. I know they've all stepped out, but I still want to offer it publicly. It's definitely hard to sit up here and listen to that. I know what it's like to lose a loved one. And the gentleman that spoke about doing a eulogy, I immediately connected with him. That's not an easy thing to do, and I appreciate all them coming out tonight and, and speaking, and giving us the respect, and giving the respect back as well. And I'm very sorry for their loss. I also want to congratulate the Westland Meteors as well. As someone who played for the Meteors, I won't say the years, but years ago, I've seen that program. It was a good program when I was involved with it. It's an even better program now under the leadership of, we call him Coach Tay, Tayron Williams, as you saw, the, the young men that were up here tonight, young men and women, I should say. So I encourage families out there in Westland, if you have children that want to be in a good program, get with the Westland Meteors, the Westline Comments, they've got good, great cheerleaders and football programs going on. Congratulations to our city attorney. I appreciate all you guys do for us, and I'll be reaching out to you, as I have a lot of questions. I also want to congratulate the appointed members to the Nankin Transit Authority, Mr. Harris, I'm not sure if he's still in the audience, or if he's in the audience, but congratulations to him and Councilman Hart. I also want to thank everyone that attended and planned the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration yesterday. It gets, it gets better every year. I participated in the Freedom Walk, and that was incredible. And like Councilman Johnson said, Hugh Perkins, wow. If you, if you didn't see it, it'll be on our cable station WLND, so make sure you check that out. It was, it was absolutely incredible. We also had a council coffee hour. I want to thank Councilman, President Protam Hersberg for leading the charge on the first one. Councilman Hart and myself were in attendance. We had about thirty people in attendance, and it was a really good discussion. We had it at Mr. Mike's on Wayne Road in Westland. And it was a really good discussion, a lot of good questions that we hope to get answered. We're going to try to do these monthly, I believe, we're going to talk, and hopefully some of my other colleagues would like to participate in those as well, because it was really beneficial to get a little bit more interpersonal. You know, some people don't like to come speak at the podium, so they can speak to us, you know, having a cup of coffee. So I appreciate everyone for coming to that. And then I just want to say thanks to Heather Hatfield for all she's done for the Westland Goodfellows. I just had a chance to meet her within the last few years, and someone who's volunteered for the Goodfellows, not for Westland, but for the city of Wayne. I'm a Westland resident, obviously, but the city of Wayne asked me to be their emcee about seven years ago, and I've been their emcee for the last seven years for their Christmas party to raise money for No Child Without a Christmas. So I know the amount of work that goes into those organizations, so I really want to say thank you to her, and there's some big shoes to fill for whoever fills her shoes. And lastly, Council President Godbout, prayers go out to the, obviously, the William Marshall family, but the Welcome Back family as well on the loss of Craig's father. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to start tonight by congratulating the Westland Meteors, and also Ms. Nevea, who was the only girl on the team, and wish them continued success. I'd also like to express my condolences to the Marshall family, and I had the opportunity to do that previously. I had the unfortunate opportunity of attending the service for Mr. Marshall. It was actually held at my home church. And so, you know, my heart goes out to the family and also to our Police Department. This was, you know, definitely something that nobody, you know, if, if we could turn back the hands of time, I'm sure this, this would be a lot different. And we do have good officers, you know, and I'm hopeful that, once the investigation is over, the family will feel a sense of closure and respect that they stated repeatedly they don't feel like they have tonight. So on a more positive note, I would like to let everybody know that the Friends of the Library is having a book sale. It's coming up on Thursday, February the 8th. It's going to be from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. If you can't make it on the 8th, they're having another one on the 9th and 10th and 11th. So you can find additional information about the book sales. I believe it's on our city website, but you can also go to the library, but the Friends of the Library, we're having a book sale the first and second week of, of the month. Also, would like to wish happy birthday to Ms. Phyllis Brown, who turned 105 years old. That is quite the, I don't want to say accomplishment, in, in my opinion, it's a blessing. And, and happy birthday goes out to her and her family, and may she continue to be in good health. Lastly, would like to just state my sincere appreciation for the Martin Luther King event that happened yesterday. It was phenomenal. Hugh Perkins did a awesome job. It, it was absolutely wonderful. And, and if you have not seen it, I would encourage anybody to, if, if you have access to our cable television, please watch it. It was, it was, it was awesome. And then also, I wanted to thank the mayor, who allowed me to do the invocation at the service, or at the celebration. So thank you all.
Councilman Hammons.
Thank you. I'd like to start off also by sending my condolences to the Marshall family. My thoughts and prayers go out to you guys. I also want to congratulate the Westland Meteors on their 2017 national championship. And I also want to make an announcement. I know that a lot of us aren't thinking about baseball with the cold weather out there right now, but the WYAA has opened registration for past baseball players that had played in their league. And starting on February 1st, they're going to open it up to all ages for baseball registration. You can go to the WYAA.com to register your son or daughter. You also can get more information at the WYA Baseball Facebook page. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Just like my colleagues, and on behalf of my wife and my family as well, we would like to extend our condolences and deepest sympathies to the Marshall family. They have been talking to me, and we've been wearing that heavy on our shoulders as well. We pray for closure on both sides, and we pray for a positive resolution in the long term. Secondly, I would agree with exactly what Ms. Green said. The MLK event was phenomenal. If, I, I encourage you to go and watch especially Hugh Perkins piece. Of course, after you watch Ms. Green's invocation, go watch Mr. Perkins piece, and then share it with your friends. So those watching at home, look for it, watch it. It is amazing. Third, again, the Westland Meteors, way to go. My son was a meteor, and I got to spend some time on the sidelines, and they didn't do nearly as well as they did this year. But Coach, if you're watching this, please have the boys and the girl report to Allen Park around July, so they can help our team downtown. And with that, I would like to thank Ms. Heather Hatfield for all of her work. I believe that dedication and civic work is the cornerstone of every strong community. I was a former JC, or current JC still, and it's the civic groups that really make a positive difference in the community and partnering with the administration and people. And last but not least, I'll give a little nod to Londo, because you're sitting in Carriage Chair, you talk the longest out of everybody now, I've noticed, so. Thank you.
Must be something about the seat. Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. My condolences also go out to the William Marshall family. This was a tragedy, and we need to do what we can to make sure this doesn't happen again up here. I want to, you know, and in light of that, I want to thank Council President Godbout. We had a few people go out of order today in the meeting. Usually that's not permissible, but I want to thank Councilman Godbout for allowing that, try to get some questions answered, and I think, I think the police chief for trying to answer the best he can. Councilman Londo brought up some delivery issues with the Westland Observer. I wish we could have gotten that straightened out tonight. You know, I got a lot of complaints. People run those things over with snow blowers. Newspapers get delivered on the driveway, they don't get it. Next week, they get another one, another one, there's just piles of them in certain places. It seems like common sense isn't really being used. So, you know, the mayor, if you do talk to anybody from there, if you could try to address that. Had a coffee hour, as Londo said, and Hart was there. We had a good conversation, got a few unique complaints, some things that we've heard before. But we're going to be looking at doing another one on February 10th. We'll let you know the location as soon as we find a place. So Policies and Procedures Subcommittee is going to be meeting. I've asked Councilwoman Green and Councilman Londo to be a part of it, so we'll be meeting soon and going over the policies and procedures and bringing back some changes before the rest of the council. We'll be talking about that here, hopefully within the next month or two. And congratulations to the Westland Meteors on the national championship.
I too would like to extend my condolences to the, the family and, and friends of William Marshall. It's, I'm, it's very difficult, I'm certain, for the family, particularly in light of the, the current investigations and the lack of information that's able to be provided at, at this point in time. But I would also like to thank them for the way they conducted themselves at the meeting this evening. They were very cognizant of the time, and were very respectful to everyone here this evening. And, and that's, that goes to a lot to the, the character of the family as well. So, again, I extend my condolences to them. I also like to extend my condolences to Craig Welcomeback and his family on the loss of his father. I know Craig's father's been ill for a while, and, but it's still tough when, when it's a family member. I'd like to thank Stephen and Deborah Thomas for leading us in the pledge this evening, as well as the marvelous performance yesterday at the Martin Luther King Celebration. And I'll echo my colleagues' comments about what a, what a great event that it was, and how well it was put together. The only thing I wish we could get fixed is Mother Nature for the walk. The snow and the cold, you know, we, we need to try and fix that next year, so while, while we're in prayer, let's pray for better weather next year when we're planning the event, and the timing for the event. I too would like to thank Heather Hatfield for all the work she's done with the Goodfellows for the, for the number of years that she's done it. It's a tough job, and there are so many moving pieces that have to take place in order for that to be successful. And she's done a spectacular job at it for a number of years. And, you know, it's, it's going to be tough to fill, and it's probably going to take more than one person to do everything that she's done over the course of the past several years, leading that organization. I, I too would also like to congratulate the Meteors on winning the national championship. It's a great accomplishment. They've worked hard. Those are great kids, and they deserve all the accolades that they received. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?